May I call the Schaumburg Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, July 22, 2025? First item is a roll call, please.
Trustee LaRosa.
Present.
Trustee Bishki.
Present.
Trustee Medei.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Claire.
Present.
Trustee Patel is absent. President Daly.
Present. We do have a quorum. I do ask if you have any electronic devices of any nature, if you would turn off the sound on those so that they will not disturb the meeting. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask trustee Sullivan to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Everybody please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you trustee Sullivan.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of minutes from July 8, 2025. Questions, comments?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the approval of expenditures for $9,025,810.18. Questions?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel is absent.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have some presentations. And the first one is a presentation of the Seventh Annual Business Bike Classic Advanced Tier One Place Trophy by Bob Schmidt, who is Chair of the Bike Way Advisory Commission and also Park District Commissioner. Hi Bob. Come on up. Appreciate you doing this.
Oh, very happy. We're very, you know, it's nice that the village does sponsor this. The Second Annual Family and Friends Bike Classic Challenge of the Month of June. We had four teams totaling 14 individuals and they rode a cumulative total of 3,262 miles. Schaumburg Bicycle Club with team members including Joan Mudstock, Lynn Calerola, and Ray Mason are here to present the trophy to them.
Okay, please come forward.
Get my good sight.
Got the official gear on today?
I do want to take pictures.
Yes. So, the question is, who gets to keep the trophy?
Well, this is, this is a traveling.
Oh, it's a traveling one. Okay, alright.
Nobody keeps it.
Ah, okay.
They just keep it. He said he'd bring it back to the bike advisory committee.
Oh, alright. Well, sure. That would make sense. Show it off there and let them see what, see that. Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Sounds good. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Seventh Annual Business Bike Classic Advanced Tier First Place Team Trophy goes to, we had 13 teams totaling 52 individuals, rode a cumulative total of 13,285 miles, riding a total of 3,227 miles. The first place team of, in the advanced tier is Z Cycle de Lago with team members John Zomsky and Sam Goodman. Would you please come up here and receive the trophy?
How many times have you guys won this?
All of them.
That's all of them.
Somebody might say that's fixed, but we won't.
Zurich.
Okay, very good. Alright. Get a good picture of that. Or actually, you could use the one from last year, I guess, right?
Thank you guys.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have the top overall rider grand prize goes to Fernanda Soto. Is he here tonight or represented?
He is.
Okay. Standing in?
He rode a total of 1,639 miles in the month of June. That's pretty much as a crow flies from here to Mexico City. So that's a long way.
Really?
And stuff. And here's, we have good.
Was he doing this just within the village or was he riding all over or?
He did it mostly in the city of Chicago and he actually just finished a full trip around Lake Michigan for about, they did it in a weekend. So he was actually training in June for that.
Okay. Good for him.
And we have Dick's Sporting Goods to present the prize for him.
Oh, okay.
As a nice, well, I'll let him explain it.
Yes. Okay. Oh, boy. Look at this.
Oh, cool.
He probably wore the other one out.
Yeah. At least wore the tires out of the head, right? Yeah, okay. Wow. Well, we've got to make sure we get a great picture of this one.
I think after riding around Lake Michigan, he's going to need new bikes.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Nice bike. Beautiful.
Yeah, nice looking bike.
Nice. Very nice.
Okay. Don't go there. Alright.
Also, he will receive a helmet from Never Ending Cycles. The village congratulates all Bike Classic winners and extends its thanks to all Bike Month participants and sponsors, including Al Larson Prairie Center for the Arts, Chick Filet in Schaumburg, Dick's Sporting Goods Schaumburg, Egg Harbor Cafe, First Watch Schaumburg, Guzman and Gomez, Lou Melnati's, McAllister Deli in Schaumburg, Menchie's in Town Square, Moretti's, Never Ending Cycles, Outback Steakhouse Schaumburg, Ride Illinois, Rise Early Cafe, Schaumburg Boomers, and of course Schaumburg Park District, Schaumburg Regional Airport, Schaumburg Township District Library, Spindor Cycle Works, Sprinkles Ice Cream Shop, and Green Joe Coffee. Thank you for all of them for their support for this.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you Bob for doing that and participating in that. Do appreciate it. I know you also worked pretty hard for, for Advan Schaumburg Tour. It's May this year, right?
Tour Schaumburg, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, thank you. Okay, I think the next one is a presentation of the 2024 Al Larson Environmental Award recipients by Mahish. Am I pronouncing this correctly? Come on up.
Parma.
Parma?
Parma.
Parma, okay. Alright. And you're, and from the environmental committee. So, nice to see you this evening.
Thank you.
Hopefully you're doing well.
Yeah.
Staying cool as best as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in the residential category, I would like to invite Lightfoot residents, Mr. John and Joanne. So, John and Joanne Lightfoot have implemented extensive energy efficient upgrades to their home. In 2024, they completed insulation of their garage and home with six inch insulated walls, attic insulation, and triple pin insulated windows to reduce heat loss. The attic fan reduced cooling needs in the summer while zoned heating and cooling prevented energy wasted by conditioning, unused spaces, and the tankless water heater further reduces energy waste. This energy efficiency is complemented by solar panel which supplemented electricity needs through renewable energy. John and Joanne maintain a large vegetable garden and preserve produce for use beyond the growing season. Additionally, the property is located on Gray Farm, March, and Lightfoot are active participants in the maintaining this ecologically important resources. The home is an excellent example of energy conservation and resource stewardship. Congratulations.
Alright, hold on to that. Turn that up a little bit so you get a picture.
That's where I go.
Okay. Okay, alright. So, can I ask you a question before you go? So, you have, you put an attic fan in?
Yes.
Okay. So, when I had my roof redone, they said, no, we don't do attic fans anymore. It's not, it's not worth doing it. And I, I thought, you know, I don't know, an attic fan would seem, I used to have one in my old house and, you know, set to a certain temperature and it would kick in when you would get, I think it was 95 or something, you know, and it would, it would run then. And I, I thought it was still a good idea, but I'm not in.
I think there's a distinction. We have an attic fan been laying into the attic that blows, it blows air into the house.
Oh, okay.
It's a whole house fan.
Whole house fan.
It winds day.
Okay.
We don't have to run the air conditioner.
Yeah.
We bring the cool air in.
Sure.
We go back from a long trip.
Okay. And I did have one of those in my old house too, so, yeah. Yeah, so they put these roof vent things, you know, and they claim that's better. Ah, okay. Alright, very good. Well, congratulations. Alright.
I have another category. That is the non-residential category. Credit goes to Schaumburg School District 54.
Ah, okay, great.
Schaumburg School District 54 worked with the company performance service to install over 600 solar panels at Hoover Elementary School and over 900 panels at Jan Adams High School. In an energy conservation project, as a result of the project, Hoover Elementary will be able to annually offset 58.9% of electricity uses and Adams will offset 49.5% of the electricity uses. School staff have tied this energy conservation project in with teaching curriculum at all schools. As part of the implementation process, students at all grade level take part in age-appropriate lessons to better understand the benefit of solar power. The village is pleased to present this award for the district's investments in the renewable energy and commitment to the environmental education. Congratulations. So, this award accepting on behalf of District 54, Mr. Chris Bengen, Assistant Superintendent of Facility Maintenance and Security. Congratulations.
So, and I have a question for you. When, when did you do Jane Addams?
So, both schools were done last summer.
That's what I thought. Yeah, okay. I thought they were putting a new roof on. So, it wasn't a new roof. It was doing the solar panels. Okay. Yeah. I have a son that lives close by to there and I would see that on every week when I was going over there. So, okay. Very good. Alright.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to liquor license request. We have a request, request from Mr. Robert Anderson for one Class A and one Class K liquor license for H Mart located at 410 East Gulf Road. New business. Are you here? Anyone from H Mart? H Mart, M-A-R-T? No. Okay. We'll move on. Request from Ms. Jennifer Galery for one Class A and one Class E liquor license for Piccolo Buco. Are you Jennifer?
I am.
Hi, we had some exchanges.
Yes. Thanks for your help.
Nice to see you. Okay. And this is at 1200 Meacham Road. It's at Gulf and Meacham.
Correct. The new development. I think it's called Crossroads of Schaumburg.
Yes, I think people will find this a great restaurant based upon everything I've seen. So.
Piccolo Buco is a, for those that don't know, is a, a second concept developed by Cooper's Hawk Winery and Restaurants. And this will be the second Piccolo Buco of the company's existence and they've chosen Schaumburg for it. So, they're very excited. They've submitted for building permits and looking to open early next year.
Right. So, getting a start on it here. And it's more Italian related?
Yes, it's based on a restaurant that the founder went to in Rome. Hand toss, you know, open wood fire pizzas, pastas, homemade pastas, and the, the package licenses for, they have a wine club where they have private label wines and with this concept, imported wines specially made for them from Tuscany and other parts of Italy.
Okay. And there is already one in Oakbrook?
Correct. That's the only one.
The other one. Okay. So, there's one in Oakbrook. So, if you want to get a taste ahead of time, by all means, you want to go visit Oakbrook and see it. So.
Yep.
Okay. So, this is new. And it is a restaurant basically with a store. If you've been to Cooper's Hawk, hopefully you all have been, you understand what the concept is. So, any questions or comments for Jennifer? No. Okay. Then you'll need to finish completing any paperwork at the liquor commissioner's office, which is the mayor's office under normal business hours. And then there'll be a background check. And assuming everything passes and works out there, then a license will be issued.
Great. Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Alright. Moving on, we have a consent agenda. Be read in its entirety. Voted on as one motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the village clerk so that it can be removed from the consent agenda and discussed further under committee reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on the consent agenda in the one motion to approve. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Number nine, correspondence. A. The motion would be to approve the request from Baby Spirit Foundation to fundraise on August 12, 2025, from sunrise to sunset at the intersections of Mall Drive and Woodfield Road, Schaumburg Road and Meacham Road, Roswell Road and Valley Lake Drive, Roswell Road and Wise Road. 10, proclamations. National Farmers Market Week, August 3 through August 9, 2025. 11, Engineering and Public Works Committee. The motion would be to approve the request to accept the subject improvements and direct staff to obtain a bill of sale at no cost to the village from D.R. Horton for Northgate at Veridian and approve the required resolution. B. The motion would be to authorize participation in the Omnia contract and award the Prairie Center of the Arts seating replacement project to H2I Group of Lombard, Illinois in the amount of $188,432.84. C. The motion would be to authorize participation in the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program contract and award the building automation system upgrades to Johnson Controls of Arlington Heights, Illinois in the amount of $194,770. D. The motion would be to waive competitive bidding and award the Engineering and Public Works Server Room Mechanical Unit Replacement Project to Hayes Mechanical of Chicago, Illinois in the amount of $137,590. E. The motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for village-wide facility condition assessment with McKinstry Ascension LLC of Chicago, Illinois in the amount of $139,600 and approve the required resolution. F. The motion would be to approve utilization of Illinois state pricing for fueling during the underground storage tank project with Wex Bank of Carroll Stream, Illinois in an amount not to exceed the approved budget. G. The motion would be to award the bid for outfit parts and vehicle commissioning services to UltraSTrobe Communications, Inc. of Crystal Lake, Illinois for a term of one year with four optional one-year extensions not to exceed $148,428 for fiscal year '25-'26 and not to exceed the budgeted amount for the optional extensions. H. The motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the 90 North Park Stage 2 Phase 3 Construction Administration with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc. of Itasca, Illinois in the amount of $468,163 and approve the required resolution. I. The motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Meacham Road Streetscape Improvement Project Phase, Stage 1 Phase 3 Construction Administration with Thomas Engineering Group LLC of Oakbrook, Illinois in the amount of $258,970.96 and approve the required resolution. J. The motion would be to approve participation in the DePage County Procurement, Procurement Division Bulk Load Salt Bid Contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Compass Minerals America, Inc. of Overland Park, Kansas in an amount not to exceed the approved budget for fiscal year '25-'26 with a one-year extension. 12, Health and Human Services Committee. A. The motion would be to approve the Lightfoot Residence and Hoover Math and Science Academy and Jane Addams Junior High as the 2024 Al Larson Environmental Award recipients. B. The motion would be to approve the 25, 2025 through 2029 Community Development Block Grant Consolidation Plan and the 2025 Action Plan and direct staff to submit the plans to HUD. 13, Public Safety Committee. The motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Schaumburg and members of the Joint Emergency Management System for Coordination on Emergency Management Services, JEMS, and approve the required resolution. B. The motion would be to approve extending the contract with JG Uniforms of Chicago, Illinois for Police Department Uniform and Equipment through April 30, 2026 in an amount not to exceed the approved budget. 14, Zoning Board of Appeals. The motion would be to approve a special use for a cemetery for Our Redeemers United Methodist Church, 1600 Schaumburg Road. B. The motion would be to approve a variation to allow an additional wall sign for Wheels Topco LLC, 1299 Zurich Way, Unit 401E. 15, Award of Bid. The motion would be to award the bid for the Meacham Road Streetscape Improvement Project Stage 1 to the lowest responsible bidder, Landmark Contractors of Huntley, Illinois in the amount of $1,783,935.52. 16, Resolutions. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-041, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute the McConner Parkway Reconstruction Project from Meacham Road to Roosevelt Boulevard Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation. B. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-042, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute the McConner Parkway Reconstruction Project from Roosevelt Boulevard to Gulf Road Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation. C. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-043, approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Schaumburg and the members of the Joint Emergency Management System for Coordination on Emergency Management Services. D. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-044, accepting the Northgate Phase 1 through 4 public improvements. E. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-045, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the village-wide facility condition assessment with McKinstry Ascension LLC. F. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-046, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the 90 North Park Stage 2 Phase 3 Construction Administration with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc. G. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-047, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement for the Meacham Road Landscape Improvement Project Stage 1 Phase 3 Construction with Administration, Construction Administration with Thomas Engineering Group LLC. 17, Ordinances. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-067, granting a special use for a cemetery for Our Redeemers United Methodist Church, 1600 Schaumburg Road. B. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-068, granting a variation to allow an additional wall sign for Wheels Topco LLC, 1299 Zurich Way, Unit 401E. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Some moved.
Second.
So, motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel is absent.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Next items, committee reports. We have none listed for this evening. Comments from the public. It's an opportunity to come before the Schaumburg Village Board to discuss, mention any items that are pertinent towards the village of Schaumburg and its operations. And we do ask that you give your name, address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. So.
Is this the time to say words of thank you?
Uh, sure. You can do that too. We always take words of thank you.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Shirley Polgar Hughes, Senior Pastor of Our Redeemers United Methodist Church. On behalf of the entire church community, I would like to express my gratitude to the board for approving the building of a memorial garden in our grounds. This sacred space will provide an opportunity for our families to lay to rest their ashes. This sacred space will provide an opportunity for our families to lay to rest the ashes of their dear ones. This is a living tribute to the work that these people have done for our community, people who have shaped us, who have guided us. This will be a space of beauty and reflection, and we are so grateful to all of you for recognizing the value of spaces like this in the life of our community. Thank you for partnering with us in this vision, and we look forward to welcoming all of you when we inaugurate this place in the near future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? You know, it's interesting, if you go overseas, of course, it's pretty common to find cemeteries that sit right next to the churches there. And it used to happen here in the United States, I guess, back in 1800s, and somewhere along the line, it changed and decided not to do that anymore. But anyway, good luck to you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, moving on. Counsel report?
No report tonight, ma'am, thank you.
President's report. I have, I don't think I have anything for this evening. No, I do not. Managers' report?
I have no report.
Report. Trustee comments, mentions, thoughts? No.
Stay cool.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Return.